There it goes, they're alive. Hi, this is the March 11th, 2015 City Council Finance Subcommittee meeting. First order of business is minutes. Councillor Riss sent the minutes from the... wasn't here last meeting and I didn't get the minutes in. He sent the meetings from that, so we're gonna put the minutes off till our next meeting and then catch up on all of them and be able to file them, because we had two meetings without a full body. Mayor's communication?
I'm all set.
You're all set? Public speak, anyone here want to speak on something other than the agenda? A new business, Councillor Riss, I know it'll be a little tougher on you because you take the minutes, but we're gonna jump around a little.
What matters? I'm ready to go.
Mr. Mason, Director of Parks and Rec has another meeting. You've got it, you can find a seat at the table, you can have it or on the side, wherever you want to sit.
Okay.
John, if you could just, I know you've gotta go to another meeting, if you could just give an overview of the soccer project, like, you know, a couple of minutes for the other councillors, I mean, I'm well aware of what it is and just how it would affect the park and what exactly they're gonna do, and then we'll continue that with any other members, I think Chief Modder weighs in on that a little too later.
Sure. We requested $230,000 from the CPA to provide an additional soccer field for the soccer complex. That will close out that area, to be honest, it'll pretty much close out the park in general with expansion for ball fields. The footprint is what it is and this will solidify the plans that were in place years ago to complete that project. We're also adding irrigation to that field and to what we consider the varsity soccer field, and that will help with maintenance. Right now, we have our guys chasing water cannons around that have to be moved every hour or so during the summertime. This way, we can get them on a cycle like our ball fields, and they're on timers, they do them in the morning, and raise up our guys for other things in the afternoon. The field, adding an additional field will take care of the youth program. There's about 700 soccer players between the high schools, the youth program, clinics and things to that. That's locally, and then there's travel soccer which comes in on the weekends, which is the benefit to the city. We get the income for the $3 a car to enter into the park on the weekends, so the city gets that revenue, so...
Youth soccer makes a contribution too to the general...
Youth soccer makes a contribution with field maintenance, some other things. This past year, not youth soccer, friends of soccer donated a scoreboard to the varsity field, so they're, yeah, they make in-kind donations as well to help offset costs, because we certainly can't afford to pay for some of the other fertilizer and things like that that they do.
So this is the last phase of this soccer?
Of soccer, yep, this is the last phase of soccer.
And how much was it total?
$230,000.
Oh, but you did another phase earlier, remember?
That was, that was the baseball soccer.
So this is all that was ever dedicated to soccer, this $230,000?
Yeah, this is, yep.
Okay, so...
The other one was $238 for the...
Baseball.
For the baseball, yep.
So this basically finishes your need to improve fields of any type down there?
Yeah, we, there's, there's no more room.
No, I mean, rebuilding fields that exist is what I'm saying. You're not gonna have to do any of that.
No, no.
We're done.
Yep.
Tennis courts?
Our two tennis courts, we re-purposed every year, so those are, those are in good shape.
The clay courts up there?
Yep.
Whatever.
Yeah, we, we spend $3,000 a year on those to refurbish them.
Okay, what kind of use they get?
They get, they get a lot of use, a lot of use.
Over, over the amount of courts there are?
Um, there's, there's some waiting time, sometimes, yeah, yeah, there is some wait time at points.
During Wimbledon or something.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, if we could, if the committee members have any other questions for John, as I said, I did promise I'd put him on, he doesn't have another meeting that he has to get to, so we're not gonna, John, we're not gonna take a vote on this tonight, we're gonna go through any other thing, and Jamie's here from CPA, also Chief Modder on the soccer, so there'll be...
We're gonna come back to it.
We're gonna come back to it, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And if we have any other questions for John, you can either email them or we'll fight them to the next meeting.
Have another meeting?
Or we'll invite you to the next meeting if there's questions, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Yep. Moving on, I guess we'll do the police next, because I have to drive home after the meeting.
What did you say, Jim?
This is a supplemental request for $41,000 from Free Cash to the police vehicle cabinet for a one-marked cruiser. I believe, reading the chief's note, Captain, he actually was looking for two vehicles, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the mayor, and the mayor can comment, I think, you know, the times are, times are tough.
I'll be happy to comment there.
Right. And I guess the only question, I did talk to the mayor earlier this week, which of the two, he mentions two vehicles that you have, which one would you get rid of? There's a 2006 Expedition and a 2009 Crown Vic, and I didn't know which one you'd get rid of.
It's the 2009 Crown Vic, it's our car number 10. It currently has 115,000 miles on it, it's had multiple repairs. The AC hasn't worked, they've tried to repair that multiple times. The car's tired, very, very tired, so we're looking to replace that with one of the new V6 SUV interceptors.
It's a Ford?
It's a Ford, correct. So we stock, Motor Repair does a great job for us, they stock all of the oil filters and the things that, you know, we need, consistent just maintenance, preventative maintenance repairs on those cars, so it's obviously, we stick to the Ford's.
Do you have one type of SUV now in there? I mean, you're phasing out all the Crown Vics?
That's correct, yeah.
So you're going to this SUV from almost all your vehicles?
For all, yeah, all the vehicles, they're gonna be phased out to this, it's basically...
It's a much better vehicle.
It's a, yeah, it's got a 70 mile an hour crash rating, an rear impact, which is just unheard of, it's incredible. But it's, it's a small, smaller, squattier version of like an Explorer, but it's built, it's kinda like the Crown Vics where when they were the interceptors, they're built specifically for police, for law enforcement. So this is a, you know, a smaller version of the Explorer, but it's, it's got a better crash rating, handles much better. For a V6, it's a lot faster, out of the gate, better braking, better handling to corners, squattier, it's closer to the ground, lower center of gravity. And it's, I think, I wanna say it was either $2,000 or $3,000 more for the SUV than the sedan, which is very compact. So for $2,000 or $3,000 more, we get a bigger vehicle, we get a lot more trunk space where the guys can carry all kinds of gear, and we just keep adding to it, and we still have plenty of room.
Captain, you know the ratio, I noticed if you look, most police, the state police and most other departments have seemed to be going to the SUVs, but you do see, I know Hoyle seems to buy more of the sedans, you know what the ratio, people, and this is unfair question maybe, because...
No, the ratio, I don't know the exact ratio, but I can tell you that all of the area departments that I've worked with and I'm very familiar with, they're all transitioning to this SUV. Hoyle, they had initially tried out a couple of vehicles, so they, they kinda put the cart on the horse, they tried out the Chevys, they found that they didn't like them, they were too compact, then they went to the, they tried getting the sedan version of the Ford, which was like the Taurus, they didn't like those, and Sodala, Hoyle, Tubman is on board, although they spent money for these smaller vehicles, they're, they're now on board, and they're buying the SUVs as well. State police are transitioning an entire fleet to these SUVs, top to bottom, they're getting rid of all the Crown Vics, which is essentially what we're, what we're gonna do, is we're gonna move forward.
Mayor, did you want to comment on the...
Sure, I'd be happy to. Actually, it's funny, you know, we're talking about the SUVs, it was a really good question, and I remember, like, as we know, we've had an unusual snowy winter, and one of the, I was without a vehicle because I was letting the DPW director use our vehicle, and, and one of the calls I got was, you know, "Don't drive your regular car," because the cruisers were getting stuck everywhere. So it's a really good reason to use them, especially with the difference in cost being like less than three grand, instead of having a cruiser stuck all over the place when they're trying to, you know, get up to a call. The other thing I wanted to mention, which I know you're well aware of and have thought of, I always, you know, have the chief always mentioned about how fortunate we've been, and especially with Captain Alberti saying how he was our, you know, our, our...
DEA.
I hate to call you the drug man, but he's responsible for us, you know, receiving all the drug forfeiture funds, and you'll know, in the letter from the chief, just since 2011, just the purchase vehicles, spent $164,342,000. So that is, as you've seen, comes before you, every council meeting, every finance meeting, is the poor shake that our fleet's in, and you can imagine where we would be without this drug forfeiture money, buying the vehicles. It cannot be used to buy the, it can only be used for drug surveillance vehicles or any vehicles that are related to that. It can't be, I, first thing I asked is can we use them for cruisers? I knew the answer, but, you know, the answer is no. You'll also notice that chief asks for two, and I sadly have put one, one request forward. He has asked for, you know, repeatedly, as a, as a chief of the department should, he's asked for two vehicles every year in his budget and never gets them there either. So I'm hoping that we can help out a little bit better as things go on, but right now, this was all I was able to put forward, so I feel like it's kind of, you know, I'm not really even doing half of, not even anywhere near a half of what they need.
To, just to piggyback the mayor was saying, with regard to the all-wheel drive and the SUVs, I will say this, I drive one, drove it in some of the most horrific snow I think I can remember, in that, these SUVs are as good in the snow, it's not better than any four-wheel drive, full four-wheel drive vehicle I've ever driven, so they're worth their waiting for, for sure.
They're excellent off-road too, but they don't have a high wheelbase?
There's not a high wheelbase.
It's not as high as an Explorer?
No, absolutely not, no, and for, for...
Are they off-road, so you wouldn't go off-road much?
I wouldn't go off-road much with them, fortunately, we have a pickup truck, we can get out in the woods or out in the fields for those, for those types of events, but I wouldn't trade the height on these cars for their handling and their braking, and I know our guys are, they're sometimes, you know, have to get somewhere really quick or have to stop really quick and handle some pretty treacherous road weights, and they do a great job.
Low center of gravity, absolutely.
What would the plan be on the Ford Expedition, you just have to use it sparingly or...
Exactly, right now, what we've done is...
And that's a bigger vehicle, they have?
It's a bigger vehicle, and we've had really nothing but problems with that, that vehicle has been in either between motor repair and market for, I think, almost as much as the car 10, the one that was replaced now. But what we've done is we've taken car 11 and made it a, kind of an admin vehicle, our court officer takes it to and from court, and it's, so it doesn't see much patrol work. We have used it in some of the snowstorms, but even that would scale back, because the SUVs, the interceptors were so good, we didn't have to rely on that expedition for major patrol. So we really just utilize it back and forth to court, transporting prisoners back and forth to court, Monday through Friday. So we've really scaled back our use of it, trying to, trying to save it as much as we can until, until we can replace it.
And is there any usefulness of the Crown Vic, you think? I mean, again, I know the chief wasn't happy with saying...
None that I could come, and that, that car...
Not usefulness necessarily, police department, I understand.
No, 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 I understand, I, no, I understand. I would say, no, I think it wouldn't, I think it would be cost-reward to transfer to another department because of the work that it still needs.
Do you trade it in for a couple bucks?
Yeah, we could try that.
What are you doing for it?
Yeah, we, we've done that in the past. Yeah, yeah, basically, it would sit in and go to auction, and you'd actually get more money at auction than you would for trade-in.
Do you still hold an auction, Mayor?
Yes, every year, we clean up, I call it cleaning up the highway garage, and, you know...
Like with our vehicle, with the stop signs that are on the floorboard, that'll be up for auction?
Yeah, so if you're interested, I was thinking of it, but, you know, the chief, along with the other department heads are really good, they work with, you know, the motor repair, and they know when we can, as they know, we recycle everything we have around here, so they know when we can use it for another department and when we can't, or when to trade it in, you know, they'll always, are, we're really on top of getting the best, if there's anything to get, whether it's a trade-in, surplus disposal, or recycling it. You know, our number one request is always recycle it if it's halfway decent, so we can use it for some of our other departments, you see that happen all the time, so...
I have no more questions, I don't even know.
Chief?
I just had a question, Captain?
Yeah?
Just had a question, the base price is in the twenties, I believe, and then after that, there's funds for equipping the vehicle, maybe you could just share with us a bit about that?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll fill you in on this.
So the base price for the, for the all-wheel drive interceptor in 2015 is, it's actually $25,900, and then I can actually give the council half of this, if you guys want it to quote, I actually received this this morning from MHQ, which is, they have the state bid, and they have the Plymouth County bid, and they also have the Greater Boston Police Council contract, and there's, there's a litany of add-ons, but this does include the lights, radios, all the LED lights throughout the, you know, the lights, the lights on top.
It's a fully equipped vehicle?
It's fully equipped, yeah, yeah.
What do you do with the old, with the old, any of the old equipment in there? Any of the old lights salvageable?
We, we have tried to do that in the past, and we found that that too was cost-reward, we wound up, we wound up trying to scavenge and replace, and I know Joe's had a box of pieces and parts under it, we tried to fix it before.
When you start putting old into new, it just, you just have...
Certainly with the radios and the computers and all, imagine there's new computers included.
And you still have to pay to have them put on, too.
Particularly with the lights, we would go from the strobe lights in the 2009 to the new LED lights, which don't draw half as much battery power, so you couldn't even interchange them, you would be allotted to, so that's...
I'm certainly agreeing. Is there separate contracting to put all the equipment in, or is that just the company does it all?
No, it's one-stop shop, yeah, we, yeah, MHQ does it all, we've been on there.
MHQ, is it?
Yeah, that's the company, they're in Marlboro.
You got the final bid, was it right in that $41,000?
That's what we're gonna talk about next. He just got it this morning.
No, I know, he said he just got it today, that's why, we didn't have it, that's why I was...
Yeah, I got it, I got it this morning, the, the, the final bid this morning was $42,600.
I don't know if we can... If it's less, it's not a problem, or it's more, I don't know.
Right, so what I wanted to say is, the chief had told me ahead of time, you know, that he was waiting for the pricing, and if it came in, you know, a couple of grand higher, he was, he was already knew that, you know, that might be a possibility and he would cover the rest.
So he has some... So you're not gonna ask the council for any addition?
I don't think I can at this point.
Right, because we did it for...
You can't, we'd have to start, we'd have to start...
I could ask for less.
Yes, if it's less, it's not a problem, if it's more, we have to start the process already. He has to do another reading, we have to...
No, no, we're all set, the chief already said that, you know, he, he would be happy to get the $41,000.
What's the final, I'd just like to know.
$42,692, that's what the bid came up this morning, and I know, as the mayor said in my conversation with the chief.
Chief will cover the rest.
Will cover the rest.
Okay. Let's hope not.
Captain, you'll get us a copy of that for, you know, again, just, before the council meeting, what I'm gonna do is, when we take a vote here, if it goes on, I'll set a public hearing for this matter at our next council meeting, which will be the 18th, and then it won't be actually heard till April 1st, which is the first meeting in April, so that's what it'll actually be.
We'd be happy, Jane would be happy to make a copy of that for you tonight.
Oh, sure.
Well, I would give one to all the councillors, so if you want it, you don't want to watch it, it's okay.
You could just give it to Barbara, so that it's in their packet for the, when we take it out, that's it.
Okay, you, because you need this one, this one right here, so I need, I need one too.
So I'll make a motion, we approve this request.
We'll motion a second to approve the request for $41,000 for a police-marked vehicle, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Three, zero.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your ride there, pal.
Thank you.
Do you get to ride the vehicles the first, when they come in? You should get that privilege, you know?
Do I, no?
I do. Dump truck, get the big truck, you take it out first? Thank you. I hope we're insured for that.
You take it for a... Joe, that's an official ride you take when they come in, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Just take it home.
Where you living now?
I'm also trying to get the fire team to let me drive the ladder truck.
Told you, the keys are at the top, you gotta climb a hundred feet to get them.
Thank you very much.
And then, just so, just so the captain knows, you're at the next meeting, you're scheduled for a public hearing?
Public hearing, and it'll be April 1st, I believe. April 1st is when it'll be heard at the full City Council.
And whenever you vote that day is not for real, because it's...
Thank you very much.
I hope you do better.
Thank you.
Moving on, we'll do, and we'll stay with vehicles, we'll do the supplemental appropriation for $29,140 for a DPW capital purchase for a, to fund a replacement recycle of the DPW I guess my one question here, and this may be a little, a little different than the police, because the police is a very specific, I know currently you use a Ford Focus, and this seems like you're going up to a four, or an all-wheel, I don't know if it's all-wheel or four-wheel, and...
You know, the mayor and the captain were talking about repurposing vehicles, we have two police cruisers in the water department, an '05 and an '06, that were repurposed, and we've had them for several years. Well, one of those cruisers is the meter reader's vehicle, and the other one is the quality assurance guy, he goes around, takes the water samples, checks the back flows, he's driving the other one. Well, the guys that are motor repair say that one of those cruisers is not gonna pass inspection this spring, so it's gotta come off the road. Our meter reader doesn't have vehicles, so the plan is to move the little Ford Focus down to the meter reader and replace that vehicle with something more appropriate. When I say more appropriate, I mean, last winter, it was shown that that vehicle is just not the vehicle for riding around in a snowstorm. The mayor was good enough to let me use the Pilot that's here during a snowstorm, because three inches, anymore three inches of snow, that small car is useless, it's gonna get stuck. So it's, it's not suited for what the job that we do a little. So the idea is to repurpose that one to another job that it will be suited for, again, it can be appropriately, right place.
So you're saying the water reader or the quality assurance doesn't take place during snowstorms?
Absolutely right, that's right. Well, there's no meter reading done when there's a snowstorm, and you can take your samples the day after the snowstorm.
That's everything, so... And you gotta get... You gotta get places in a snowstorm.
I have to get places.
And I don't know how you did it before on a Vic.
That's what I said, that's why, as soon as...
I have to give credit to this mayor for recognizing the fact that that vehicle is not suited for that, and without going into too much detail, during a snowstorm, there's two different, there's two different things going on, you can have the highway supervisor who's handling the technical end of things, he's, he's concentrating on moving contractors and counting quick around to get the roads blocked. We're getting phone calls from PD, from the DPW office, whether it's complaints from a resident or concerns from a resident, I handle those, I take that off the shoulders with the highway guy, he doesn't need to be thinking like that, he needs to be concentrating on where his equipment is at that time. So it works out quite well. The other thing too is that during a snowstorm, the highway guy and I are always talking about how we're gonna, how we're gonna pace this, and how we're gonna, how we're gonna get it done. It's not in his, and I don't want to give it, give him the authority to make the decision to spend additional money that is outside of what we normally do. So when there's something that, it's a big storm, or something additional, he comes to me and says, "Here's my plan, I'd like to do this," okay, we sit down and talk about it, but I'm right there to either scale it back or agree with it or whatever, to make sure we control costs. And the only way I can do that is to be right there during the snowstorm, and that's what I am, with all I was in the day and night.
And, and when that came to my attention, I think, you know, just knowing what he was driving, yeah, just knowing what he was driving and knowing that he's, you know, out at 2:00 in the morning in these snowstorms, I honestly don't know how that, how that vehicle got from one place to another place. I think people don't realize that, you know, in these storms, Joe's here, and I think it's totally unsafe anyway for anybody to be driving, that vehicle is terrible in the snow, I mean, I, I've driven a sedan in the snow, but that one is extremely, extremely low, extremely light, and to me, shouldn't be driven, but I think, when we were talking about it, it's a perfect vehicle for the reader, you know, it's, you know, a little economy-ish and, and hopefully...
How many miles, I'm sorry, do you know how many miles on the...
It's about 25,000 miles.
So there's a lot of life, hopefully.
For the little Focus.
Right, there is a lot of life to it if...
If you're used for...
If it's used in the, is a right purpose.
Right, because I've got, you know, obviously, I've had my eye on that one for a while for, you know, for our assessor's office, but I, as you can see, we have one of our beautiful Crown Vics that isn't gonna pass inspection, so it's gotta go to, you know, like the, a full-time person that's in it, you know, eight hours a day versus, you know, doing assessor inspections. Now, you know, I'm sure you all are aware of this, but I have one of the so-called drug pilot that is supposed to be used for my office, well, if I need it for, you know, a meeting, or Melissa needs it for, I mean, I share with everybody, Melissa needs it, Jane needs it, any department needs it, council and aging needs it, I mean, that vehicle is shared with everybody, but every day, it is used by the assessor's office and the building inspector's office. So, I mean, I have to make an appointment for that thing a couple of months, I had the time, if I need it, you know, to go to Boston or whatever. So, you know, recycling vehicles is what we do, it's always sad when they can't pass inspection, but I think this is a great use of it, and, you know, moving it down and, you know, keep on going down the line, but I'm just kinda sad it didn't come as far as, as, as our office, but I don't know if any of you have ever been in it, so you ever wanna take a, take a seat in it? The first time I got in it, when Joe went to take me for a tour, barely fit. So it's, when you call it a small vehicle, it's a small vehicle.
It's a Focus?
Yes.
It's a Ford.
And of course, we had a joke, I said, "That's the last time we bought a vehicle that I can't fit."
Do, we know the, and again, I'm just going because I know we have an ordinance on gas mileage ordinance, but it is a little different, sounds like it's gonna be a little different purpose, or maybe a more appropriate purpose.
Exactly.
But I was wondering if you know, just because this could come up, other members of the council, I know, of what the mileage difference would be, I don't know what the mileage is on one of these Explorers, or, I would assume that Focus probably gets pretty good mileage.
That gets about 28 miles per gallon, but if you look at it the other way, it's gonna be replacing a Crown Vic that gets...
That's getting on the, right, the water geist. And how about cost-wise, I've given, it didn't seem that, I mean, 29 is, not that it's cheap, I'm just saying...
Not bad, again, that, again, that's a state bid.
Right, when you see the, you know, the police package, the police package and all that stuff.
We don't need all that other stuff, all we need is a few flashing lights and a two-way radio. JP?
Let's see, where's the Ford Explorer, right?
Yes.
It's on the back page. I thought the miles per gallon was 24.
That's possible.
It's a V6, I would imagine that's possible, plus with the new engines around now. But the Ford Escape has 32.
The Ford Escape is...
It's an all-wheel drive vehicle. Captain, Alberti just spoke about all-wheel drives as being better in snowstorms, I think.
Well, this is, this one's all-wheel drive too.
It's a four-by-four versus on-demand.
But the, the Ford Focuses are, again, I mean, the Escape is a light vehicle, it's a light four-by-four, it's not, it's not something that is, is as good in the snow as this is.
Yeah, it's more off-road, off-road need more higher space, like the Explorer, I would think that you would need versus the police.
versus the police. You're right. I mean, I think, I think the reason you want it is because it's more heavy duty for regard to highway work.
Right. The other thing too is, I really have no room in this car to put anything. If I put my, my lime green jacket in the backseat, that's about all we're putting.
If you're lucky.
Um, you know, it'd be nice if you could carry, carry a couple of cones and carry a few things and get on the job before the other guys, you can, you know, you can help them out. Can't do it with this car. There's just no room.
I'm sorry, you also need to tell them about how you drive that vehicle. That has to come up, about the gas pedal.
Oh.
I mean, I'm sorry.
Are you heavy on the gas pedal?
The gas pedal and the brake pedal are so close together that I have to position my foot on the gas pedal way over...
You're talking about the Ford Focus?
Yes. Because if not, when I come off the gas, I can't, I can't hit the brakes because my foot gets caught underneath the brake pedal. So if I go to stop, I'm underneath the brake pedal.
I can't believe you're driving it. You don't have to convince me.
No, no, I didn't have an issue with that.
He's, he's talking about Escape versus Explorer.
Versus Explorer, just want to be able to understand the difference.
We also did this with the, um, like, you know, did this with the highway department too. And we've been talking about this a little bit, making sure that when we do buy something, and what we're talking about is a perfect example of last time, you know, when we do buy something, that it really meets the needs of what it's being used for and the purpose. You know, so a little bit, you know, heavier duty, a little bit more purposeful, and, you know, Joe needs it to, you know, use it obviously for throwing, sorry, what?
No, the other thing too is that, is that Captain Albert said he's going to all Explorer so they can stop one part of the cars.
Right.
Well, if you get into Escape, some of those parts are going to be the same, but some of those are going to be different. So now you're, now you're throwing another whole thing on the shelf.
Right.
I don't have any problem with it.
Thanks, Dave.
And the price is about the same as an Escape. I mean, this is a little more money, I think. It's comparable.
I think they were the same.
$2,500 or so.
Yeah, that's right.
$2,500 less is the Escape, that's right.
I, I don't know.
I meant...
Not off the, off the state bid though. I thought they were really...
They were really close.
I don't think there was that much difference in them, but as far as, you know, being able to have all the oil, you know, we do all the oil changes and having all the, you know, all the things in stock, you know, that type of thing. So a lot of things came into play on it. Those are, you know, good questions.
Melissa, did you have a...
Well, I was just going to say, because he's saying he wants a heavier vehicle in a pinch, could you not tow something with this vehicle where you, like, you have a ton of trailers around and I know, you know...
That's a good point.
We've put...
Versus the Escape?
Versus the Escape. We've talked about that with, with some of the replacement vehicles that you've gotten for the Enterprise and Highway. And in a pinch, is it heavy enough to tow one of the smaller trailers?
Sure. Are you getting a towing package or...
Yeah.
It's easy to install. You are getting a package so you can... I have no problem with it. I think DPW director is picking a vehicle that suits his purpose. I don't, I don't disagree with your thought, but I think it's a different purpose than the police. And I don't see a problem with, with him picking a vehicle that works for him. And I'm shocked that he fit into a Focus.
The police don't use the Escape anyway. That's not good.
Not that you're...
Police vehicles. That's better. That's more like, no, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, 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 theirs is an Escape. Yours is the Interceptor.
But it is an all-wheel.
Right. And JP, I thought you would be really happy because the power windows and door locks are included in this. Did you see that?
They're included in, in, in almost all of them.
Well, no, I thought you would...
Plymouth County Commission.
I thought you would like that.
You can't get a crank vehicle anymore. I really can't. I'd like to move that we, you guys need more discussion?
JP? Can hold it over if you want. I'm just saying if you want to.
I'm, I'm good on it. Uh, I see the use of, of the vehicle that we have, it's been getting repurposed in good fashion, so there isn't like a need to go out and, why don't we just buy a car for that purpose? And since this is mainly concerned with, that this was a 2012 vehicle with 25,000 miles, maybe we should be looking to buy something for, something really small for meter reading work. But...
Is it a Ford Focus?
Have you ever been in a Focus?
I don't know who does the meter reading.
But I knew.
We may have to change our prerequisites for the people we hire for the...
Your work...
That's exactly...
Your work on, on, in snowstorms.
That's what I said to Joe.
Is there any other information you want from the mayor or...
I'll second. I'll move that we accept. We approve the request.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the 29-140 for a replacement for the director's vehicle with the, we replace it with the old vehicle going to the water department to read the meters. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi. The mayor, just while you're still here, just quickly, talking about vehicles and vehicles breaking down, police breaking down, what do we do when something breaks down? Just educate me for a moment, maybe the public. We don't have our own tow trucks. What do we pay and how do we get them around?
If we can get it on our, on our own downwater repair, we do. If not, we'll have to call a local person with a hook.
How often, how often do we do that?
We don't do that that often.
I was just wondering how much money we spend doing that.
We don't do that that often. That doesn't happen very much.
Thank God.
The guys down motor repair usually figure out a way to get it over there.
Get it over there. That's good. All right. Thank you. That's what I like to hear.
Like I told the captain, this, I'll request a public hearing at the next city council will be heard on April 1st for full councils. You may want to be there for that because I just think that, again, where you're getting kind of a repurposed vehicle, there may be questions from the other counselors that, you know, I think it's best coming from you or the mayor that, you know, I'm sure we can explain your, your thing is more passionate.
Maybe we should do a test drive.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on, we're going to do the fire first because the fire chief is here, and then we'll move on. This is a $7,900 request from the reserve fund for ambulance professional services, equipment repair, medical supplies and equipment repair. It's all itemized on the memo. I don't know if the chief, you want to comment on, on the items or...
The first one's the, the one I tell you every year is the one that you should...
That's the good one.
You wish I was asking for $30,000 instead of $3,000. That just means that we've exceeded what was anticipated in ambulance receipts.
In building.
Um, right now, we're about $60,000 over last year's, same period. I think, I think we're, I think the receipts of right now are about $60,000 ahead of where we were this last fiscal year, which is a good thing.
You didn't time that, you didn't time that response, did you?
Yeah.
Chief, are you in need of...
Of course he did.
No. I don't see smoke in an engine from first, so I think we're good.
We're good.
Just ask Chris if I'm...
Right.
Well, all of our public services have gone that way, so somebody wants to be on the other side of town.
So that one is, is...
It's the first item.
We exceed the 500 and 750,000, I think that was based on. So we're going to exceed the $550,000 in ambulance receipts that was anticipated for this year.
So we need to pay more for billing.
Right. We need to pay, pay $3,000.
We have to bill more because we're getting it.
Right. So that's how, that's a good one.
We always do like to get that one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anytime you want to come, when you don't have to repair something, tell us this, it's okay.
Well, it's because we're so busy, why everything's breaking, that's why I...
Now you want to spend it. Without income.
The first one in their ambulance, the 5483 is repair of vehicles. Every year, we're required to get all three ambulances inspected as part of our licensure with the state. This year, there was some deficiencies noted. Seat cushions that the stability was coming apart, which have to be sewn differently than normal so that infectious body fluids can't get in there and contaminate the whole bench. So we got to send those out. We have some light fixtures that have to be replaced on our older ambulance. Unfortunately, the technology then was fluorescent tubes, and it's just not smart anymore to keep throwing fluorescent starters in there. So we want to replace those with LEDs. We won't have to worry about every two years putting new fluorescent bulbs and starters in them. The 5500 are 2010 ambulance. The state and department, federal department of transportation, which sets the standards for ambulance manufacturing, has determined that that ambulance, the cardiac monitor needs to be in a bracket. And what's currently done is, in the back of the ambulance, there's a seat that's probably about three feet wide. Currently, the cardiac monitor is seatbelted in there, which is kind of scary because it's a $30,000 piece of equipment, but it's easier than going to spend $900 for a bracket. The state said that ambulance, that, our oldest ambulance doesn't need a bracket. You can still get away with the seatbelt. The 2010, because of its age, we now have to put a bracket to hold the cardiac monitor in there. That's $900 that was not anticipated on this year. A bunch of it was built.
How much life left on the ambulance?
Um, that's going to be good for probably about seven more years. That is a 2010 with 71,000 miles. The oldest one is a 2006 with 90, 90,000 even, I think.
So $900, hopefully will last for another seven years.
That, that monitor will...
Protecting the cardiac.
Monitor, yeah. The $30,000. Yeah. And the last one is fire vehicles. We picked up a piece of metal in one of the rear tires on the ladder, went right through the sidewall of that one tire is $800. Luckily, it only took out one because there are eight tires.
Eight tires.
Yeah, there's, there's eight rear tires on the ladder. Luckily, it only took out one. And then my car has, is in need of a brake job. The roads have done a number on the front end. There's front end work that needs to be done that is estimated. That's about $800, $900. That vehicle is a 2008 with 65,000 miles on it. It's never had any front end work done.
Don't tell me it's an old Crown Vic.
Uh, no, it's a Ford Taurus, which is not much bigger than his Focus.
Do we budget anything for these maintenance?
We are, we do, well, right now, the, I think it was $7,500 is my original funded amount. Pretty much just covers preventative maintenance for the two engines, the ladder, and the three support vehicles we have. It's just pretty much oil changes.
Oil changes.
And luckily, the oil in the ladder alone takes, I think Dennis said, seven gallons. We have a business that donates a 55-gallon drum of motor oil for the engines and the ladder anytime we need it, which saves me a, I don't even know what a 55-gallon drum of oil costs, but I don't need to know because somebody gives it to me. But it only covers the preventative maintenance. We're required every year to have the fire pumps tested by an independent party, and all of our ladders have to be tested, and that pretty much beats up to $7,500. So anything that breaks that's beyond preventative.
Is something you come and... Do you carry spare tires?
We carry spares.
On the ladder?
No. The only spares we carry are for the ambulances.
It can ride if one tire's down. It can continue on to its cycle.
Yeah, the ambulances will go through a set of tires in about a year and a half, so we keep a complete set for one ambulance on hand.
Would you shut down the, the ladder truck if you didn't have a tire? Maybe...
Can you use it now? Are you waiting on a tire?
Yeah, the tire's replaced.
Can you get them quickly? I mean, is it...
Yeah.
It's not like...
So this is reimburseings on account because you already replaced it.
Yeah, because I've had it robbed from one of my other lineups right now.
Oh, so he's got the...
Yeah, the tires are replaced because I can't, can't really have that truck out of service.
I was going to say.
Yeah, it wouldn't be sitting there waiting.
So they're available on a day's notice? Half a day?
Uh, it took about a day and a half because the closest one, we discovered it like 2:00 in the afternoon, and the closest tire that size was an asphalt, so by the time they picked it up and got it back here was...
We'd like to see your equipment out and running.
Yeah, me too.
Well, as you say, you can't drive it with a tire down.
Right.
Probably not more than one.
Okay.
Take it out in a Porsche. Well, it sounds like we don't have much choice on this.
I move approve.
We have a second, Dan?
No, yes.
I have a motion of second to approve the 7900 for the ambulance professional equipment, medical and equipment repair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, chief, on that. Again, April 1st, I'll set a public hearing at the next council meeting. Moving back to the CPA, and I thank the patience of the, of the people that have been here on CPA. We started with the soccer field. Mr. Mason was here, and Jamie's now here. I don't know if the counselors have additional questions for Jamie, or Chief Mader was also involved in the soccer, soccer proposal. I could just say from being a member of the CPA, on this particular item, the soccer field, this has been ongoing for, I want to say, three years maybe that they first came in, and Mr. Cannon, I believe you did the design on that also. And what the CPA originally did was, we had the design work done for both the baseball, and correct me if I'm, the baseball and the soccer, but when it was brought to the CPA last year, the CPA felt to do them both in the same year was just prohibitive of taking too many funds out of CPA. So we really left it up to the park and rec board to determine which they felt should be done first. And I, I think they felt both were equally valuable to the recreational thing, but the baseball kind of had been in the, in the queue longer, I guess, because they had done some previous. So they wanted the baseball fund, and so we did fund the baseball at approximately the same price last year, and this would be the, the other half that we kind of told soccer if they came back, we'd be willing to entertain that, and it was unanimous by the CPA committee. Again, I don't know if you have any other questions for Jamie, who's obviously been through the thing the whole time and...
I have one question for Jamie. I want to read this memo. It has to do with also the Brickyard. The total cost is 415. You say as of 2/24, there's 640,000 left in the undesigned account. Do we subtract 415 from that, or is that act, that's what's left?
The current balance in the undesigned account is 64854.
So if we approve this, do we, does we subtract 415 from that?
Yeah, so if these appropriations are approved, the undesigned account would go to 225, 734.
And do we have any other...
That's if both projects were...
Yes, if the 415 is a...
Right, both.
So we have 225, 734 left in that, and what about the other designated accounts that they...
Uh, we have about $100,000 in the total housing account and about $280,000 in the reserve fund.
Oh, really? The reserve fund?
Yes.
I forgot.
The reserve fund is used as a...
I forgot.
...financial balancing for the books. The CPA tries not to spend from the reserve account until the books close at the end of the year, and then that's, that money's then rolled over to the undesigned account.
So basically, you have nothing in the other two...
It was $18 or something.
$27.
$27. Twenty-seven dollars.
Twenty-seven dollars?
In historic preservation, and the open space account was zeroed out with the rail
trail preparation.
But that's still, by math is good, almost six hundred grand here.
Yes.
So that's pretty good. Do we have any other things on the pipeline besides this?
There's nothing official on the chart, but a couple were possibly coming this next meeting.
Right, there are a couple new applications for the CPA for the coming funding cycle, but those would, the cycle ends in May, and depending on the city council funds it, it might come out in the 2016 budget, and so there's another.
And that's when we get our, when do we get our funds from the state?
We get our funds from the state in.
Quarterly, don't we?
The funds are already in.
So we already have.
You cannot use them in the current year unless you take it from the reserve, which is how you budget new money in the current year.
Okay, got it. Well, this is good. I was just curious, I mean, I am happy using it. I don't like to see a lot of money sitting there without project, because this is a great project, so I have no problem. Thank you, that's all I needed.
Is there any more questions tonight on the soccer? And again, we're going to keep both of the CPA open till the next meeting, because I know I did get you both a copy of both their applications with the cost figures. So you may want to go over them again, because we do have, we can't do anything before April first anyway, and I hope to have a public hearing set on both of them, maybe at the next city council, but, you know, we'll leave them open for the next subcommittee meeting later. So, do we have any more questions on soccer?
I did have a quick question, maybe, too bad John's not here, but maybe you know Dave. The tournament type, versus, are there such a thing?
Yeah, East Hampton Sports runs a, what they call, three-on-three tournament every year. I wouldn't want to guess at the numbers, but I can tell you in years past, every inch of that soccer complex was covered with teams playing, because they use smaller fields. I want to say, I didn't go with this, in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and thirteen, I think they had over two hundred participants in that one tournament, two-day tournament.
Yes.
Also, depending on how the high school teams do, their first round tournament play could be there. I know in the fall, the girls' soccer team had at least one home game at the park.
I was thinking in terms of revenue generation for the park, more cars going through, more outowners.
They're paying the fee, supporting the park, and helping offset other accounts, so this expenditure, we can, how this expenditure would play into that. On weekends there is, East Hampton has, and I want to say last year, spring and fall soccer. They have the travel teams, which is under a league called PBTSO, and that's all of Western Mass, mostly Pioneer Valley, but some outside, that will come to East Hampton. They're paying three dollars to get in there. A lot of times what the league will do in order to save money on scheduling officials, the eight AM game Saturday morning may be East Hampton versus Huntington. The nine AM game may be Chickaby versus Bubba. So there may not even be an East Hampton team playing, because they'll keep the same officials, but they're all paying the three dollars per car loan to get into the park. And it's pretty much on weekends, especially fall season, when East Hampton has a good number of teams, pretty much from eight AM till usually two in the afternoon, there's travel league teams playing back there.
That was our own question today, thank you. It looks like there's plenty of activities.
Oh, yes, I think they did, John quickly went over the numbers, I think.
Yeah, it was over seven hundred.
Yeah, it was close up to eight hundred people that are using John.
Yeah, that's great.
And I know I've been down there a few times when they're playing soccer, and I think this will really, maybe, Chief, just quickly, the, right now, the varsity, the field that's used for varsity high school, JV high school, that's already watered?
No.
Nothing?
There's no irrigation at all.
So that will be watered in a new field?
The one closest to the concessions, the closest to the road, that will have irrigation, the new field will have irrigation, and the main lines will be run for the whole thing. And then park and rec employees will finish that on their own as the years build up. But his priority was the varsity field, because that takes a lot, has a lot of use in the new field, only to get water to the new grass or to the seed, to get it healthier quicker.
Again, we could put this off, if you guys, between now and the next subcommittee meeting, I'm sure you can email John Mason or the chief.
I won't be here at the next meeting, so if you want to vote on it tonight, I'm fine. I love this project, so it's up to you guys. I don't have.
I will leave it open, I mean, I have no problem.
But you told John.
Right, this is a good case, JP, because I, but again, I have no problem with it either. Again, I sit on CPA, I have no problem with either project, so.
I seem to be happy with both projects. The only issue I have is I do like to see some money in the account, in the undesigned and in the reserves, so that if another project comes up.
There is.
That's why I asked.
Actually, I do have.
Six hundred dollars.
So I don't mind having that account, I'm sure it's used wisely for the next project.
Thank you, Chief, for all that on that. We're moving on to the Mutterfield Brickyard project. This is an accessible trail, I guess for physically challenged, I guess would be the way of putting it. For the, you know, this is John Vator, I believe, Vator. D-A-T-O-R. And Marty Klein, and Mr., Bill Ken.
Why don't you join us, John?
Right, why don't you, you can bulk it up.
Marty, you and John are on CPA.
No, they're on.
We're in the board of trust. Trust, okay. And I'm a member, too.
Mr. Ken is a member and did the architectural.
As a designer. Remember, in our landscape park.
And I don't know if either one of you want to, let me just give a quick, how it went through CPA. Originally this came in, and Mr. Cannon can talk to this maybe first. The thought was, and I'm not sure where it came from, that it might need to be prevailing wage. So the original number was a little bit higher. I believe the total project, if I have the old one, was in the, three-ten was the estimate, and you were asking, I believe, like two fifty-three, maybe from CPA. And then when you realized there was no prevailing wage, you went back, redid the numbers, and came back with a request that we have currently in front of us, which is a CPA request of one eighty-five for a total project of two fifty-three. There is also in here, because I know JP likes to always see something, the trust did get a forty-seven thousand dollar grant, that's part of this, and also, I know they're putting in a little bit extra money since the second project, I believe, and again, you could pull.
Twenty thousand is in there. We've been getting some donations, and we really haven't started our fund drive, but we're anticipating we'll probably raise maybe twenty-five thousand on loan.
Twenty-five thousand.
In addition to what the state grant.
And the other grant was forty-five.
Was forty-seven thousand.
Yeah, that's Department of Conservation or Recreation.
And I guess the, gentlemen, and you can go through the mapping and all this, there's two ways to enter this, one's East Green Street, and one is East Street. The only other question at CPA was on the East Street, there is some neighbor concerns, and so they need to put some, not neighbor concerns, in that they're going to put a small parking lot, and so there was some plantings that the committee or the trust felt that had to be in place for the neighbor to block the parking.
Border play.
And, right. And a couple of CPA members did discuss, why are we putting plants in a, why are we putting plants in a open conservation area? No, you're awesome.
I have a meeting, it's okay.
No.
You don't have any.
No, absolutely, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'll see you soon.
Okay.
Is it the area you're talking about?
And the parking lot of being here?
For the neighbors across the street.
Well, there's a side neighbor, right?
Yeah, it's the adjacent neighbor.
Adjacent.
The adjacent neighbor's side of the field.
No, he wasn't complaining, I think it was just.
He was concerned. About the project, you know, just they had a concern about privacy, so screening.
Trying to give them.
Put some screening plants in for them.
That's a great idea.
But, you know, one is Gary Golis.
He's, I don't know if he's a member of that, I know he's big in conservation.
So, yeah, he's totally in.
In favor.
In favor, and he actually's been mowing with his tractor a lot of fields, and we have that.
No, I only mentioned it in full disclosure, one of the CPA members in particular said, why are we putting, in other words, why are we adding plants to a open space slash thing? It was more for the, you know, the neighbors and his base.
There's one other area, we're going to have to deal with some runoff from the parking area, and so we'll need to do some excavation below the parking area, because there's about a ten-foot drop between that and the street, and so there will have to be some additional plantings put into that rain garden that will be created there.
Do you want to soften it, like a wall?
Bill, could you maybe explain kind of, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, I kind of interjected a little bit in the presentation process with the CPA about, you know, the site drops off from East Street considerably, and then there's a running block that our pathway system will have to cross to get to the larger open meadow area. And so we have, in order to kind of create a safe area for a small part of parking, we had to kind of build up the grade to make it accessible from East Street, and otherwise, the other thing is that we couldn't get good sightlines, so by bringing the grade up, people exiting onto East Street have a better sightline and everything else. So it created a great difference, and we had to do some grading and everything else, so that in turn disturbed that area. And I had no problems, of course, as a landscape architect, of, you know, reworking some plantings into the disturbed areas that we needed to do to kind of, you know, get the grading done and everything else. So it's a kind of a combination of doing some plantings around the disturbed areas, plantings over on the Gary Golis side for privacy, and as Marty said, we need to get this permitted through the Conservation Commission. I know they're going to, through my past experience, going to be looking for some mitigation from the runoff of the parking area. It's not paved, this is kind of a gravel parking area. But we're going to have to create some kind of stormwater mitigation area for the runoff from that, and that's going to have to be planted, and the gravity will then in turn let it flow down into the low point where there's a small brook and everything else. Those are the kind of things we're kind of bound by a little bit, by working within the proper area.
I'll just add, any kind of planting in disturbed areas, we're going to strive to make it look as natural as possible, because it's in a natural open space area, and we want to try to minimize the look of disturbance as much as possible. We will have a hundred-foot ramp going from the parking area down to the trail itself, so obviously that's not going to be natural looking, but as far as the landscaping goes, we'll try to use native plants where right possible.
Well, there are all native plants. Yeah, I mean, that's a key, that's a key issue.
We're not putting palm trees on the side.
Could one of you gentlemen, I don't care which one, explain to the other two counselors kind of what the whole concept is of the ramping, and there's going to be picnic tables and a small pavilion, I guess, or?
So we, our current, well, we have Brickyard Brook, which is our most heavily used conservation area, you can access that from the end of Mount Tom Avenue. A lot of people in the neighborhoods around there use that property and walk the trails there. We have a loop trail in that property that kind of goes behind Mountain View Farms. And then in two thousand and twelve, we acquired the six-acre parcel, which is adjacent to our existing one, where we plan to build a trail. And so, as Dan mentioned, there's going to be an entrance at the end of East Green Street, and the parking area entrance on East Street, and then there'll be about an eighteen-hundred-foot loop trail around the meadow infield. At the East Green Street end of the trail, there'll be a picnic area, handicap accessible picnic area.
Like a.
Yeah, there's big trees there, yep. And we'll install a few benches, and we also plan to have an inclement weather shelter also on the trail.
So the trail is stone dust?
It will be stone dust on gravel, yeah.
And is that improving the existing trail as well as the new one, if I understand?
We're not doing anything to the existing trail, because of the terrain there, it can't be handicap accessible.
That's what I was going to ask you. You currently don't have handicap accessibility in this area, so you're adding it through this.
We don't have it on any of the properties at this point.
Really? I didn't know that.
Well, it's so rugged, you know, there's steps and.
So you're making, you're adding one so that there is some place in town where disabled people can enjoy the outdoors.
Currently, very few conservation areas anywhere near have this kind of trail.
It's hard, because it's got different land.
Do they have, painting ours on the one that Reymar Stables?
Over in Hadley? I know you.
Yeah, I mean, I think the trust was very astute in observing that a lot of the open meadow area is added grade that makes it reasonable and negotiable for handicap people, you know, and so, the idea came up, I thought it was great to kind of incorporate that into the whole accessibility, public accessibility type of thing. So it's not, so it's accessible to the handicap, too.
Well, yeah. We expect that there'll be a large population in the community that'll be interested in the trail. Something like fifty percent of people over sixty-five have a disability of some kind, and you've got patrons, you've got almost half the clients at your site use chairs, so.
And they'll have a picnic area that they can get to, they'll have a, you know, outdoor activity they can get to.
Really beautiful view of Mount Tom Cliffs from there, so it's a great site.
I hope you advertise that it's available, that's fantastic.
Do you have a, do you have a contingent, I know the East Green Street, all that culvert works already in process, I don't know where it is.
Yeah, it's almost all done.
But your other side, your other side, as Phil said, you're still in front of conservation.
Yes, yeah, we got to get it permitted, we've got to kind of get the drawings up to snuff.
Are you fairly confident that your budget, I mean, again, I don't, I'd hate to see this project's, you know, not, or be.
Well, we're.
Your whole, you never know.
No, we think we're being realistic.
Well, you've done site surveys, you know what's in the ground and everything, right?
Yeah, you know, I hit the, it's a good, it's a plus for the project, because it's on private land, and as we've been advised, you don't have to go through prevailing wage rates in the public bidding process, although, although we'll be inviting, I would think, to get some competitive bids, maybe half a dozen interested contractors and everything else, but that's certainly going to save some money, and I have to admit that it does take out a little bit of the unknown. You know, sometimes these public bids can get kind of wacky, and that was my experience with getting the two fields done up there, I mean, we had prices.
Or the pond.
Well, pond, yeah, it was my project.
No, I know that was, I was a foot now.
Yeah, that, yeah.
That was considerably.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm behind the, it's private land, it's not the trust, trust land?
Trust, trust.
The trust is private. The trust is private as opposed to municipal land, because the trust is.
Yes, as opposed to non-tuck park type of thing and everything.
I was confusing the trust with being.
Yeah, sorry.
Community land, based on the fact that you're a community, but it's not taxpayer-funded, it's, unless you're talking about through the grants and everything, but.
It's not quite like the man in rail trail.
The man in rail trail is supported by the park and rec, as this is the trust.
Right, we're an independent nonprofit.
But the city does get a, and maybe, Jamie, the city gets a, I'll call it an easement, that may not be the profit, we're, conservation.
Conservation restrictions on.
All this property that they.
A lot of the PCT land, the city has conservation restrictions on, and a lot of the city's open space land that's protected, PCT actually has the conservation restriction, and so it's, it would require the city to, if PCT wants to sell the land and develop, it would require the city to go.
Okay with it, yeah.
And because we own the conservation restriction, it's held by the Conservation Committee, or the City Council, it's been accepted, that if there's protections in place, that it couldn't just be sold off and made into a subdivision.
And it's open to anybody in the public? Doesn't a dismember, this is, the disrepublic.
So it does benefit the entire community.
There's access from that field to the regular trails of the.
The other.
Yeah, conservation area.
How many trails do, this is, you guys know.
We have.
What do you have, like seventeen properties?
No, fourteen.
You lost a couple.
Combined, well, when you buy an extension, that's still considered one parcel, so it's basically, I've got thirty-five acres, we own fourteen parcels, then that's not counting all property to be saved, like Park Hill, like Hilldale.
Right.
Work property.
So as far as properties that have trails on, there's Flyer, there's Harmony Meadow that we built last year.
Oakmont.
Oakmont, right, and Brickyard Brook.
John Vator Park.
Okay.
Yeah, well, this is fantastic. Wherever it's feasible, we like to make it accessible to the public, but we can't generally make it accessible to the entire public. Here's a good opportunity for us to do.
Is that the terrain?
No, no, it's.
This accessible trail would be the only accessible trail in East Hampton, on public land or private land, except for, there's a boardwalk on.
Arcade.
And that, this is together in a natural setting.
It's excellent.
JP, do you? I would imagine the surfaces that you're talking about would be useful, be able to be used also in addition to wheel devices, canes.
Wheelchair.
Strollers, and just.
Strollers, thinking.
No disability, of course.
Walkers.
Anybody.
Well, it's crushed, it's pretty stiff.
Are there any areas?
It's almost like pavement.
Are they easily, could easily be washed out on this trail?
Well, there's got to be a frame.
There's a lip along the sides of the trail, which serves two purposes, it holds the trail in place, and in case someone is using a cane, doesn't have sight, and they can tell where the edge of the trail is.
Do you see this?
I was just thinking in terms of washouts.
Dreaming?
The same material throughout the whole trail.
Yes.
Is advisable, or if there was an area that could potentially be wiped, I'm just thinking, hell, storms, lots of storms, and lots of water going down.
I mean, let's face it, if there is some damage and everything else, I don't know if you know how the trust works and everything else, but these guys work hard on maintaining their properties and the trails and everything else, and I'm sure, I'm certain, there would be the same due diligence in maintaining the trails on this, and probably maybe even a little bit more, because it's going to be sensitive to handicap people. So if there's some kind of washout or something, you know, I'm sure that, you know, immediate attention paid to it to kind of rectify it, you know, whatever else.
I was thinking of pre-designing it if there were certain areas that you knew, well, this doesn't look like, this looks like an area that's going to.
Anticipate we're going to run into that, because it's pretty easy terrain.
Yeah, there's a certain amount of site, there's going to be a certain amount of due diligence, due diligence out in the site, and really specifically locating where this trail goes. We might move it, for instance, three feet, five feet this way here, or take a little bit more of a bend, depending on the terrain a little bit, but we want, we want this pathway to traverse the terrain with the least resistance in terms of grades and everything else, so we'll have to kind of sensibly locate that in a public area.
I understand it's also pretty easy to prepare, wheelbarrow and the.
Well, yeah, exactly.
Tamper, and you can take care of this.
Probably, we're going to, let me finish that section, have a spare amount of materials and some stockpile someplace to, by this wheelbarrow.
Have it available there. And we're hoping ideally that we'll be able to engage some groups of people just in the community who will be interested in. who will be interested in doing regular maintenance, you know, the re-wacking that will need to be done around the trail.
What's your anticipated, hopeful, anticipated date that you would have this done? I mean, again, I know it's hard.
Yeah, it's hard to know, but definitely by the end of the year.
Okay. You hope you're going to done this.
Absolutely, yeah.
Did we have to work during the summer, probably?
Yeah, we, well, we've used up the DCR money, because we have till December 31st to use the DCR money. But we just, it's a reimbursement kind of a grant, so we spend the money first and then we send invoice to them. So we just sent a request for like $35,000, so still like $12,000 left. But we'll spend that easily.
Yeah, I'll have to get, I'll have to get drawings done, revised drawings, get drawings done. There's, we want to meet with some certain, certain groups that are sensitive to the handicap user needs. And we've got to go through the permit with the Conservation Commission, get the plans all set, and then we've got to have some time, you know, it's probably three, four weeks in there where we've got to get bids and prices in, and then, you know, there's time involved in mobilizing somebody and then scheduling somebody, so.
Wheels turn slow.
What's that?
Wheels sometimes turn slowly.
Yeah, well, the thought, yeah.
Well, it's taxpayer money. I always think that.
So, again, the council is going to have more questions. As I told everybody else, what we'll do is we are going to hold this open because there is a lot out. You know, going through, I know you said you're not going to be here, Damon, and I'm sure if you have questions between now and our next meeting, if you get them to Bill or Marty or John, I'm sure they'd be glad to answer them, or Jamie.
I have, I have.
And then we'll, same with new JP, we'll take it up, all these designs. I know I was very familiar with it because we had at least three meetings maybe at CPA, just going back.
Can I keep that? One quick question.
Yeah.
In terms of parking at the East Street end, I see a description of four little cars here. Is it, how many, how many cars do you figure will be able to fit comfortably in the parking?
I think we're, it's, if you were to line it out as if it was a paved parking, I think there was room for six, I believe, but, you know, there's more that can kind of fit in there if they parallel park a little bit and everything else. Not going to be a formally lined type of thing or anything else.
I think there'll be maybe two designated handicap spots, though, I guess.
Normally you don't have.
Yeah, they'll be designated with signage.
Parcels, you know, we come and go.
I have a funny feeling this is going to be a special park.
We are limited to the amount of room there, so.
It's going to draw a lot of attention.
We could only do what we can do with parks.
It's going to be even dollars.
Even dollars.
And it did come up at the CPA, the East Green Street. Because I did mention, because we've had some things number up in Chatham where people accessed Mount Tom and then neighbors complained about the cars parked.
Cars that are parked along there.
But there was, there was some talk that the neighbors, at least in the area of East Green, are good with the project. It's kind of a dead end there and a little turnaround, so hopefully we won't have.
We've been in touch with them.
Most, I think, most of the people there will probably walk in because that's really, unless you know where, unless you know where you're going there, you're not going to just find, you're not going to come upon that.
That's in a very densely populated neighborhood.
You're not going to come upon that driving around.
Right, there, people are more likely to kind of take a stroll down there to that entry.
Well, East Green Street end, there's all kinds of neighbors in that end coming into, walking their dogs.
Right, so they'll probably enjoy it.
Yeah, we talk a lot.
No, I was, one, I think I mentioned that, because I know we've, you know, what I hope we don't have is, a year from now, people that now want park, no parking signs, remember like we've had some up on, up on Reservation Road and Chatham up on the mountain, because that's where the people end and then walk the street.
Actually, the land kind of almost abuts the cul-de-sac there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's raking.
Exactly.
And it's level, if I recall, relatively level?
Yes.
Goes down, I guess.
Suppose if somebody put no parking sign, you could say, well, jeez, the cars, we can park them right off the street. And then there'd be more cars. I don't know.
Well, there's no, yeah, there's no room there. I mean, the brook is pretty close to the cul-de-sac. Yeah, and it's, there's a little bit of a wooded, vegetated area there.
Forty, fifty feet, that's too close.
That cul-de-sac, it might get in four cars.
Yeah.
Relatively comfortably in there, so there'd be room for eight cars.
Right, I mean, I've heard.
Reasonable for the near future, for sure.
For, during this construction and the repairs of the culvert, we've had four cars just kind of comfortably park, parallel park around the backside of it, the cul-de-sac, and it seems to work out.
Quick question on materials for the ramp, I call them ramps, walkways. The developed areas using lumber and on the sides, is there any surplus lumber? I was reading online about surplus lumber.
Well, the Fish and Wildlife Trail that was built in Hadley, because they're a federal government agency, they got all their wood from FEMA. We really can't do that.
We can go up and.
I know where there's a lot of them. Maybe they could spare some with the pond project.
Yeah, property over there.
You could shoot it right down to East Street almost.
Is that DCR? The Mount Tom, yeah, it's DCR, and DCR is giving us trail fund money for the project.
Are they lumbering?
Well, but we in the LA should treat it.
I was going to say, I don't know.
They're doing something.
I don't know if they could pressure treat it on site up there.
They do, they do. Aside from letting me.
Well, you use pressure treated stuff, right?
I'm not sure about this.
Yeah, it's got to be on top of this pressure.
Doesn't wait to save money here.
It's got to be pressure treated.
Certainly pressure treated in contact with the soil.
Where do they go with the compost, that's really expensive.
I don't think you need to.
No, we're not using.
And you know, you guys have a great group that'll maintain it, you replace a piece of pressure treated, this is going to be inexpensive as opposed to compost.
Sounds like you're doing a great thing. This is a very good project.
You think so? Oh my God, it's great that accessibility is what your key component is.
It's great to be ready to go.
No, I think, we'll keep them away. I mean, I don't think it is.
That's a pretty unique project, I think.
So you guys know, I'm voting yes in abstent here. But I'll vote yes at the council meeting, I'll be there, but I won't be here at the 25th.
But you don't have a problem with any of us contacting any one of you? If there's a question or going through this, if something comes up. And you won't, you're more than welcome to come, we'll have our next meeting the 25th. You're more than welcome to come to that if you want.
Can you imagine, we didn't have the CPA.
March 25th will be the next subcommittee meeting, and then definitely April 1st. Definitely April 1st, if they could be at the full city council meeting, it would be great. In case there's questions from the other councilors. So that'll be April 1st. That's really the more crucial of the two meetings to, if there's one you want. Okay? Thank you, can I?
Since Moses is not here, I couldn't hear the last.
No, no, we got to, I got to get information from her. We'll put that off to the.
Yeah, so just go down to Rymar and just bring.
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay, Marty.
So I won't be here on the 25th.
But it's snow still there, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
See you later, Jamie.
Rubbing noses with a genie.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion is a second.